Okay, everybody.
Okay, host sign in. It says here.
According to the official. You got communication with the rest of the world there?
Well, yeah, okay.
Change how I said.
I need to open my.
All right, sir. We're going.
So we've got all the mapping we need to have.
And I'm going to read that to you.
Do you have sound with you?
Let's see. All this effort. Can you hear us?
Is that me? What are you, celebrating?
She said yes. Yes.
Okay.
I have lots of skills, John. All right, Peter. You're on.
Six o'clock. I'd like to call the order. The Taylor Hybrid Meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for May 4th, 2023. And we do have a call. So are there any updates to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay, so under Communications and Announcements. M D R A Memoratorium, memorandum of the 1105 Route 28. S P R 180367. We have a letter from Citizens Opposed to the Calamari Lane Hotel Working Group. We have a revised M D R more numbers memorandum.
That just added. We had two gay week meetings now. They had one on there, so I had to keep going.
And then we have the Talk to Towns topics for March and April. We have a supplemental submission from 1105 Route 28. We have an email from L. Love regarding community action, tent at Woodstock Farm Festival availability. And then later, the H O T F document, opposed zoning amendments for the town board received April 27.
May I say a thing about that? Um, I hope everybody recognizes that this will be officially presented with in detail. Next Tuesday at the town special town board meeting called for that. And I want to urge everybody on the planning board to attend that. It starts at, is that right, seven?
I believe seven.
And, you know, it'll be available on Zoom. There will also be a housing committee presentation and opportunity for people to ask questions and have conversation. On the 30th of May, I do not have a date for that. I believe it's at the community center. That's the town housing committee's presentation, you know, opportunity for people to discuss this. I want to urge people to at least read the 14-page summary report. It will give you a way in. There's lots of auxiliary paperwork. And eventually, we all ought to look at the law. Possibly, we ought to have some training on the law because there's significant changes. But for now, to know what the new law's draft proposal contains. I think the two-page highlights and the 14-page summary will really give you a good view of the whole thing.
Right.
It's not an unreasonable amount of reading. And it isn't 300 pages. We didn't change 300 pages. It's way less than 300 pages.
I'm glad.
But it is detailed that we have to think, we above all others, except for maybe the zoning. The zoning of border appeals have to read it and understand how it's going to play in practice. Because if we think there are things that are problematic, we really have to let the committee know and the town board know. So that they know that we are, I hope we're going to be fully behind this, but Melissa has already found a couple of minor clerical things that needed to be fixed.
All right.
Thank you.
Good, good. Okay, so under scheduled business tonight, we have three sketch plan reviews. And the first one is 18 Strebele LLC Planning Board Case 23-1043A. This is a sketch plan review of a subdivision application for a lot line revision of two parcels. Resulting in new lots of 59.89 acres and 4. 1.19 acres in the R3 zoning district located in 18 Strebele Road and Route 212 in Woodstock. And the rep is.
You just have to unmute yourself, Melissa.
The map, if we need to share it.
I'm sorry. Hi, can you hear me?
I can now, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I heard most of what you just said. The audio is cutting out a little bit, but I can get most of it.
High-tech meetings are fun.
Yes, they sure are.
Why don't you tell us what you guys planning to do?
Um, there isn't immediate plan to build there, but I understand that we would need at least three acres to put a residence on that parcel. So the owner would like to have that option open in the future. And so we expanded it just a little more than, it's at four acres. So there's a little bit of a forest buffer if he did want to build a house on that parcel.
And that's the little parcel that lets on to 212, right?
That's right. It's to get on to that parcel, to the right of Bear Still Garage.
I see exactly what you're doing.
Okay, planning board members have questions?
It's up on, it's up on the board there. It's coming. There you go. So what they're looking for is to make this little thing, which is 286, legal.
Yep.
Seems like a no-brainer to me.
Anybody have questions?
They both own both parcels, so it's all your call. Your call.
Whether we go for a public hearing or wave review. I can see waving review. You guys will pay with it.
I'd support waving review.
Yeah.
Same owners.
Yep, me too. There's road access to both the big one and the middle one, so.
Yeah, makes it more.
Make a motion for me just wave further review wave public hearing.
I move we waive further public review and public hearing on S P A, no, it's on S P A. What do we need here? Planning Board 23-1043A.
Thank you.
Line.
Second. Oh.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you. Melissa, I'll be in touch. I can draw the paperwork, but you hear your meeting. Thank you, planning board.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Nice to start with an easy one.
Okay, our next sketch plan review is Timothy H. Keefe and Donna Keith, deceased. And Barbara Fairbanks, S U P number 23-0675. And this is a sketch plan review of a special use permit application to operate a campsite located in the R8 zoning district on Hutch Hill Road in Shade. And the rep is Timothy Keefe. If you share, if you're not present.
Let's hope.
Fingers crossed.
And I've got that one available to go up to.
Tim, come to the table. We're waiting on you, my dear.
You're right.
You are right on time. Welcome, Tim. Take the, take the seat.
Hi there, everybody.
So I just read the, the sketch again review, so if you can tell the board what you plan to do.
Well, we've already been doing it. It's a single tent site. Been there for about, actually been there many years for the family, but we've actually been renting it out for the last five or six years. There's no impact. There's no traffic. There's. No board of health approvals. Yeah, it's just a tent and people come and sleep in it, basically.
If I remember, it's on 100 acres, right? In the middle of 100 acres.
Yeah.
All right, planning board members have questions?
I'm just trying to get the, trying to get the.
You can send us nice pictures of it. That was nice.
Okay, that's what I want. Is that the site plan PDF that we got? At least I will be able, yeah, I think.
It's at the very, very, very end of Hutch Hill.
That is it. And I can, I can bring it up for people to see.
Actually, David also told me today.
Not very controversial thing.
I got his blessing from him. Likes good neighbors.
Do you have an old logging road going up there? And what do they do for sanitation?
It's, they call it lu, it's a lu house. Lu bags, kind of like they use in astronaut shoes.
Probably chemicals in it. Pretty steep road.
Yeah, we got any other board members have questions?
No.
I mean, I don't know if you all, I see a member of the.
Mr. Cross. Might just be briefly.
Sure.
My name is George Cross. I live on Hudson Hill Road. And I saw this application with no knowledge of details last night on the agenda. So some of my neighbors were a little along. So planning our location for a campsite, but probably we don't need to be along, but we do have a couple of questions. I guess we're very sensitized to campsites after the turmoil debacle. And obviously, I don't think any of us want something like that on the top.
Mr. Cross, this is one tent.
This is one.
One tent.
Yes.
And it's also without a public hearing.
Actually, my meeting in section 206 of the zoning code is you don't need more than, less than two tents, but anyway, maybe.
We're in short-term rental world, so I think it's better safe than sorry. And it's a zoning call.
Finally. So on the application, it does say campsite. It's, so I think we would be very happy to be assured that this was no more than one tent. I don't know if that's written into the permission, but anyway, that's, I mean, we didn't see the plan still this morning when we tried to send it to us. So, yes, we're very familiar with that. Tom August is on the Zoom, who is the immediate neighbor there. And I guess we're not having any real problem because just one tent. Can I ask you though, the planning board, if Mr. Keefe were to want more tents there? What would be required with the septic system? Would it require well?
That would be up to the building department. That's.
Okay, because of course the access is pretty difficult.
Yeah.
And obviously, emergency services aren't up there. So I understand this is just kind of regularizing the situation. Mr. Keefe mentioned has been ongoing for a couple of years. I think some of us saw Shady Hall's campsite, but it didn't seem to be leaving anywhere on Google Maps last year. Anyway, so I think those are concerns of myself and my neighbors. And I think if this is really restricted to one tent, we don't have any problems. And we wish Mr. Keefe good luck with the rent business.
As I said, this is not a public hearing, so we're listening to you.
Yes, but I mean, you, can I make it 30 seconds here?
Your call, Peter.
Just briefly.
I see you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself.
The kids are at the town in Brim.
I have them.
I did. The kids and I have been neighbors for 54 years. And they're excellent stewards of the land. What they want to do personally, I understand that an area of being concerned about expansion of anything there because. Power for a lot of anything. And. Jameson very much, so I want to support and caution at the same time.
So I just kind of answered the question. Generally, what happens if there needs to be a change, that it would come back to the board again?
At what point would it need to be changed? Two, three, five? What point?
Basically, zoning says two or more.
Right.
So if you have less, really not allowed, so that's why we're here.
It's one. He has one.
I know. I understand that.
What you're saying is if there are two.
If it expands into two, is there a regional regulatory process? I don't believe there is.
No, I don't believe so.
But at three, there is. That's where I understand the law.
Build a code on that better than you have than I do.
It can go to two without further review.
So we're saying two or less is what.
Yeah.
Two.
Yes.
That seems to be what they're saying.
Exactly. So as long as everybody understands that, because Mr. Cross.
Just put it in there.
Made an emphasis on the word one on several occasions, and I don't think this limits it to one.
It's two.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
We'll work that into the resolution.
This is, yeah, two or less.
Any other board members have questions?
I mean, I guess, yeah, just like how many, is there any necessity to define how many people can be on one campsite if there's two?
We're restricted to four.
So for.
Unless you get previewed prior approval from us.
Okay.
So it's generally, you only see through two, usually only two people. Sometimes they bring two kids. It's usually only.
Eighteen guys and a truck over here.
You wouldn't want to understand.
Bridal tower.
All right, Ken, well, this is an S U P, so we will have to have a public hearing, because absolutely we have to do the, figure for the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm going to schedule it.
You're good?
We're good.
Good. Okay.
Impeccable timing.
We'll see you.
Have a good night. Take care.
Okay.
Mr. Cross and Mr. Grim, you can speak at the public hearing if you want.
I'm sorry.
You can speak at the public hearing if you want.
Come on.
So this is on.
Okay, our next sketch plan review is 105 Route 28 LLC. Special use permit number 18-0367 and S U P number 13-0472. This is a sketch plan review of plans. With M D R memorandum review and discussion for site plan review and special use permit applications. To modify existing developed site and reestablish use as a gas station. Renovate and enlarge store and install fuel supply system in the N C zoning district located at 1105 Route 28. Rep by heart. William Maronic and Cuddy and Federer. Thomas Kenta and Barry Medenbacher, Medenbacher and Eggers.
Who to?
To know those names.
I got this. Ready? Caleb Carr, Medenbacher and Eggers.
Okay.
Taylor from Cuddy and Federer. I'm sorry.
Paul, no worries. But we'll first and last.
I believe you're Starkip.
And our.
And that's Mark, who's the owner.
Is Matt with us?
He is not. He said 6:30, so I said I would handle it. So we want to just let you guys kind of introduce. Yeah, how about we just let them talk?
All right, let me just.
Yeah.
On, excuse me, I just a little bit of, a little bit technical about this, but in the description, it says to reestablish use. There is a period of time to reestablish use, and this was passed that 15 years ago. That's, that's the, so we, you're not reestablishing use. As far as I am concerned, this is a new use.
If I may just introduce myself, I am Taylor Palmer. I'm a partner with law from Cuddy and Federer. I will answer that question directly. The applicant is not seeking to say a non-conforming use or an existing non-conformity that was removed is no, is still permitted. It is a new application for a new fueling station and convenience store. Of course, it is a permitted, specially permitted use in the district. So it's not that it was an existing non-conformity and now they're proposing it. I think maybe I could just give you a quick walk back because we're sort of a new-ish team to what this application has seen before you. It's been here for a few minutes. COVID has come and goneish, and here we are. So it's, you know, exactly right now, it gives you pink eye. So, you know, to that, to that end. I figured we'll give you a quick walk back and show you where we are, and then we can bring it up. Maybe that'll get Matt enough time to join the summit call. He knows all this. It's all in his memos. So let me walk it back.
Somewhere on my hard drive, I have all of the.
Right, as you, as you heard.
We've got the map.
And as you heard in the introduction by the chairman, there was some, you know, submission, supplemental submission, submission. And we're almost at the next supplemental, but before we get there, let's get you back to where we are. So as the chair mentioned, we are before you in connection with a new site plan application and special permit application. It is for a new fueling station and a convenience store at the site, which was previously improved by a single pump gas station owned by a former town representative. Historically.
Oh, good.
Judge.
Judge. It's the home port.
Good place to do it, right?
No, in the gas station. In the first day, I've been holed in there, so I see.
You know, they used to have one in the stadium for the Philadelphia Eagles. You know, that's how we feel about those fans, so.
I wanted to establish it was a one pump.
One pump, exactly.
And it was a two-lane road.
Exactly. And, and of course, I might add.
Important.
Here we go. I got, I got exactly where you're going. I read the comments online. I've read the history, so let's, let's have, let's have some fun. So we've upgraded our team, as you can see, you know, and I can say that because I'm here with, with my esteemed colleagues. Thank you. I'm here with my esteemed colleague from Medenbacher and Eggers, obviously folks that you've worked with regularly. They're our engineers. They've upgraded the site plan that will be presented to you in a moment. So before I turn it over to Caleb. We're also joined by Starkip, who's with Craig Manning, our traffic consultant. So those are sort of new additions, but that was mostly because the comments that came out of initial sketch plan concerns highlighted exactly this. The entrance onto and off of 28, you know, where we are on Basin, all those things that are now worked into a document for a review. Where Matt has provided at least initial comments and part of our ask spoiler alert will be to suggest you might retain or work with Matt to work with a traffic consultant to review Mr. Hip's memorandum. Of course, this was formerly a gas station. You know the location well. Fair is repeating for the record that, of course, it's located directly across or diagonally from another well-known reputable gas station stewards, which has access on and off of 28. Of course, it's a signalized intersection of that. The chair mentioned it before. We're in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. So of course, the first time, as I mentioned in our earlier joke, we did start with you all in 2019. We've since revised the application. Overall, it is a 2,400 square foot convenience store, and there are eight toll pumps. So there are four new stations, and there are eight toll pumps within those four stations with a canopy over the top. Again, very similar to what you have right across the street, excuse me, right across the street at the location with the Stewart's gas station. There'll be 11 parking spaces that are proposed for the application. And then we also have ingress and egress off of, so there's a right in, right on the, right in, right out. Ingress, sorry, right in, right out off of New York 28, which Stark will touch on, and then off of Basin, which is the little, little piece of Basin, not the one-way slip ramp. But the, the two-way on Basin, there's access there, ingress, egress. So we did originally revise this application. I'm seeing if, if I have enough time for, for map, but not yet.
Well, I took the map off because I was looking for the plan.
Okay, yeah, that's, so I'll let, I'll let Caleb touch on the plan up on the screen in just a minute. Thank you.
Um, not the same one. I mean, there's several documents. I'm looking at the last couple of documents that you sent me, Melissa. So there's two things here. One is full set and the other is two P B.
We do have the full set. We have the physical plans if that would be, if we want, if you'd like us to do old school and.
I, so to you guys, I mean, I can put it up there and everybody will see it, including the public.
Yeah.
So you want the full set?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So, and then Caleb will walk through this in just a minute, but to steal some of his talking points before he can get there. The supplemental submission that we have provided and the site plans that you now have from your possession are.
Got it.
The main changes to these plans was to remove any variances that were required. A lot of it was just really just the finessing of the site. It wasn't anything major. It was a lot of just, say at least bad design. And since we hired Medenbacher and Eggers, they've gone in and have revised that to make it so it's a zoning compliant application in our, in our materials. We, of course, also provided a traffic impact study, which helps represent the characteristics of the area there. You know, I was there tonight at Stewart's across the street, just filling out before the meeting. And again, it wasn't particularly busy, but of course, we updated those numbers to reflect July traffic. And of course, the busier season is one of the staleness comments that haven't been mentioned. We want to make sure that the material and the information that's in that study is representative when you're really filling up at that location. So with that, I will let Caleb please walk through the plans and let Stark just kind of touch on the.
Right now, you've got page one, and you can tell me what you want.
Yeah. I, I will, mainly on one. Taylor went over most of the things, basically from the previous applicant, application to this one, everything's basically gotten smaller. We've gone from five pump stations down to four. So the canopy itself has gotten smaller, and the store itself is slightly smaller and trying to reduce the customer floor space. To limit the number of parking spaces on the site down from 16 to 11. And so, and you know, basically, everything's, I mean, everything got smaller. And the one big reason on making sure everything got smaller was that the open space, making sure that we meet the open space required 40%. And so the required was 40%, and I know our number is wrong on our plan, but then the percentage is actually 41.5%.
It's the green?
That's, yeah, well, they had a green space. Exactly. The green space is 41.5% of the site. So that's, that's probably one of the biggest thing. Again, it's variance. I know it was marked wrong on sheet one. We say, we said 65, but that's, that's not correct. So I just wanted to point that out. That was part of that, meeting, meeting the variance. And I know there's other comments, Matt's, with Matt's letter. I don't know if we're going to get to go through more of those comments directly with him.
Come on up, man.
He's here.
Yes, we're seeing this. Yes, we just did.
Not to worry.
All that you've heard. So I don't know if I have to go through any, you know, the direct points unless we want to go through that letter.
And then all we're saying is that we reduced some of the, the original correspondence from the original submissions from the prior engineer before Medenbacher and Eggers involved. Had a number of sort of secretaries that made it so that it wasn't zoning compliant for a lot of little things, whether it's open space or otherwise. The plan that Medenbacher and Eggers has prepared revises it to try and make it all conform with zoning, student zoning. And, and so that way we can receive the board. We did just give an initial presentation. The building has been reduced. The number of pumps has been reduced. And we've, of course, had prepared our traffic impact study. So at this point, we were turning it over to Stark to walk it over and tell us about the traffic impact before.
Amen?
Yes.
Sorry, we spoke.
Wait, I can do this again. Ready? Caleb Carr, Medenbacher and Eggers, Taylor Peters from Cuddy and Federer.
Close.
Close? Taylor. Starkip from St. Vincent Manning, and that's Mark Dumbley.
Okay, so Matt's here. And Matt, if you would please go through your memo.
We're going to let Stark go first. He's going to finish. There's feel.
Yeah, so.
Hang on a second. I think before we talk about the new traffic study, I'd like, I've never had an opportunity to hear the board's comments about, about mine now. We haven't yet. We're waiting.
We're not going to do that yet.
Well, but see, you want me to talk about, so which, which do you want?
Well, something.
Start to do a brief. He's just going to give an update about what in and outs.
Okay, give your update, and then we'll go through the memo.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, all right, so we did a pair of traffic study way back when. And we had that traffic study actually reviewed by Matt. And since then, we have revised the traffic study to look at volumes from July of 2022. We did that to account for the Chervin Rail Trail. So that's how we kind of created the basis of our traffic volumes to study. We created our term in the trip generation for the site using I T E, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, industry standard publication. Use the applicable land, applicable land use, which is a gas station, convenience store. We do account for a certain amount of pass-by trips along roadway, which is kind of expected for a gasoline station or like a fast food restaurant. I think the big topic of discussion has been access specifically on 28. I think back when this project started in March of 2020, scary time. It was going to be full movement on 28 and discussions with D O T. We brought it down to right in, right out. I know there was also going to be access on the short segment between Basin and 28 on what is kind of Xena slash Basin Road. Discussions with the county, we've eliminated that driveway, so there's just a full movement on Basin. What else? I know that one of the reductions or one of the benefits of the reduction in the site was that we meet the, or comply with parking spaces. What else can I hit on? It's pretty quick. And I, I'm just going into, or some of the major comments that I wanted to make sure we addressed from Matt. Because their understandable comment was about potential backups on that slip lane that comes from kind of east. Eastbound slash southbound 28, that is, allows people to come on to Basin Road. So it's the left side of the screen, but so if you're traveling eastbound, you can exit onto that slip ramp, and then you can take, you can take the left on the basin and go to Xena, or you can continue south on Basin. You can take the left on the basin and go to Xena or you can continue south on basin. One comment was about a queue study to make sure, or a queue analysis to make sure that vehicles aren't backing out on the twenty eight. Um, and so again, based on the traffic lines that we collected in July of twenty twenty two, which is almost. Uh, commensurate to the, the peak volumes for the Churkin rail trail, which is October. Um, we found that the longest queue backup on that segment was, uh. Seventy, or sorry, uh, fifty one, fifty one feet, and there's a hundred and fifty feet of road there, so. The, and that's the ninety fifth percentile queue, which is the, close to the maximum queue length you might see on that segment. Uh, I'm sorry, which one, the basin road, Xena road segment? No, the, the basin road segment that's to the left, so.
Okay, like the exit from twenty eight.
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a slip plane off of twenty eight that allows you to go down basin.
So you can go down basin, come around and go in from the back.
Correct, yeah, so if you were, that's how you would get to the site. You, if you were, if I was going eastbound to get to the site, I like, say I just left the rail trail, I wanted to get a Gatorade. I would come in off the access on twenty eight.
Yeah, but if you're coming, if you're coming northwest, then you're gonna have to go into basin road and come around them.
Correct, yes, say I'm going to the rail trail and I wanted to get my water bottle for taking a ride, I would, well, I'd probably go to Stewart's, sorry.
And go back.
The reality is the site, the site of Stewart's is gonna pick up northbound and then we're gonna pick up southbound, so you're actually gonna hopefully. Improve a condition of people that may already be illegally turning left into Stewart's or doing other bad movements in the area. So sometimes, you know, addition by subtraction and less graffiti can help, hopefully bring a better cause to.
So I think that kind of, that kind of hits the high level, uh, comments, I'm, I'm happy to hear, uh, I've read Matt's comments. And I think that the revised study that we prepared addresses the majority of his comments. And then there was a supplemental or additional comment letter that was provided, which we provided this.
We didn't, yeah.
Which we provided another response to your other comment letter, um, that I think addresses the, the main comments, so. Uh, that's kind of my spiel.
So that was, when was that other piece?
July the twenty first.
So I haven't reviewed.
April twenty fourth.
Okay.
Correct, and we will be submitting, you know, we spoil alerted before, but to spoil alert again, we are going to. Today, we really hope to discuss with you, you know, the updated traffic report, the revised plans, to kind of get a feeling of where, where we are. And then be able to put in the supplemental that will really address all of it, it's gonna, it's sort of gonna be one. Full bang submission, how, how we want to address, how you want us to address that as far as, so you're not sort of like picking pieces out of, out of each. We might be able to just write up the letter to say, you know, response to February letter, response to March letter, that way it's all in one place for you. So.
Those, some of those questions, the questions you've been asking for a long time.
Sure.
We have a new team. Missed that spiel. You missed that spiel, we have a new team.
Sorry, Stark's gonna.
Sorry, sir.
You remember when we were on, I think it was Peter and John who were the face reps on that job.
Uh, or.
Of course.
Oh, that's right, but I remember when we were on that site that you were standing at the driveway that was coming out of, out of basin road and you looked at the slope of that. And so seeing that that's, seeing that we made that slope there is really sort of crucial thing. Because at the, at the section closest to the road, it has to flatten out.
There's, there's some, I think, I'm assuming these are, um, contour lines here.
Those are, those are the existing contours, yes, that you showed on that there.
From the, from the proposal that we reviewed and reviewed in this memo, there weren't the contours that could determine whether or not that was, that was great changes to there. So, so again, I think it's, I think I really want to hear from the board because the applicant needs to hear that, that's really gonna dictate where the board goes procedurally on this. So, um, I'm happy to go walk through my memorandum. When you choose to proceed or, or.
Uh, if you could just walk through the memorandum, I think that would be.
And if you want any particular piece of the plans.
Oh.
This is, this is, looks like it's the amended.
Grading.
Yeah.
It's funny, when you write a planning memo, it's like, the, the written description of it is like in real life, this is, this is, these are the real ideas. So I wanted, I'm gonna just make some of the, some, some of the main points. So did you already detail the, the reductions in size?
Yes.
Of this?
Yeah.
So I guess maybe, you know, one of the things I wouldn't mind seeing right off the bat, one of my first comments in the memo is, um. In the twenty, in the, in the twenty four hundred square foot convenience store, you call, um. Twelve hundred square foot patron area. What you're doing between the twelve hundred square patron area and the twenty four hundred square foot store, like what's the other twelve hundred square feet?
You want to speak to that?
That, that would be like.
This is marked on all the on.
So that would be the area of, of that encompassed with the walk-in cooler, you know, cooler floor space, not, not where customers are standing. Uh, behind the counter, um, mechanical room, probably a small office.
Right, so that, 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 that makes sound useful, because that's really a factor, because that's, that's the footage that's used to determine the parking. Uh, so the, the patron area doesn't really include space that really would be customer area, and that, and that's okay.
So twelve hundred is actual usable space for customers.
If, if.
Yeah, and then we walk, and our architect is working on the floor plan to.
I can, I can, and I can give you spoilers, we also have renderings and other things coming, so there's a lot, like you said, we've got a lot coming for you to try to really help. Better get a sense of how this feels on the site and we're hearing the comments and trying to make sure they're all worked in, so there's a lot, you know.
So that's just a, a small initial point to establish that the amount of space in the convenience store. Should not be counted for parking, because if any of it really had to be counted for parking, that would really fall off. There'd have to be more parking spaces, so reviewing those, those four plans will determine if that's, if that's the case. And so that, that, that's, that's good, and, um, so they reduced the size of the building. Um, uh, they reduced the size of the canopy, so that no longer needs variances, which is no problem with the project. They reduced the number of, of fewer pumps, um, and of course you reviewed that already, uh, down to, uh, to five stations, uh, from five stations with ten pumps to. So that's obviously a step in the right direction, but of course. You know, the, the twelve hundred square feet of convenience store space and this number of pumps still don't generate certain amount of traffic. And based on what the board's concerns are and what the potential impacts are, that could still be a reduction, you know, it's like a twenty percent reduction, so that may not really. Make a change in some of our, some of the feelings that maybe you've been interested in traffic, for example. Because that would be, that would be a real issue that we have to delve into. The driveway access is on a change, I did want to point out that, think about the grade, that was one of our earliest comments. On the, on the basin, on the one going out to basin road, you know, heading west out to basin road, uh, I call it west. Uh, uh, whether you can make the grade, that's really an important consideration. And that was one of the things that we'd always, um, commented on, that we would, you know, be recommending that an engineer look at the plans at some point in time, which. You know, may have been absolutely necessary, but they have to, on the, on behalf of the plan, we determine that that grade is satisfactory in us. You know, we, it's, it's evident that it isn't, and you don't have to.
Matt, I have a question about that grade.
Dennis didn't receive these.
There's a stream on the other side of the road.
He never.
I'm sorry? Yeah, yeah.
There's a stream on the other side of the road, so I'm asking about runoff. From a gas station into the stream, even though there's a road in between.
Alright.
If there were serious rain.
Deep into the memo, we have a series of stormwater comments, which were exactly that as well as a few other things.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's something that we, that we have, we have dealt on. Seen this and you've noticed yourselves, um. So that, that's great. Um, it, it, and for those of you who haven't seen this application before, which I think, whatever, um, it is a permitted use, so that's, 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 uh. It, it is there, it is an undersized lot, but the undersized lot is permitted by virtue of the, of the orders as, as a lot pre-existing zoning orders can be developed. So it can be developed and, um, uh, and, um. And they can gateway meet themselves at this, because you know, there are projects that are sensitive because of their location or some other aspect of it. County office that service that without, they'll host, you know, some of the board members who may be on the committee to be there, without, they'll host. A meeting with some of the other agencies, so get everybody talking at the same, same time in the same meeting, they're very, very effective. And the board, two of these, right?
Yes.
I think there was only one of these, right? So, so, uh, so, and that would go, so very helpful, and, uh, so it's not just an, an issue that the county, for example, Dennis, um, uh, the. The commissioner, I'm on the other side of the planet, but so I saw him, so he knows that this is, it's on the agenda that we're talking about. And, and he's very interested in, in, in about it, because obviously.
Nice follow.
Yeah, because you got some of the updated, you got the rail numbers, I mean, yeah, so I was just. And then by the way, it's, the boards can say it's okay if you're poor, and then it's really only a function of, you know, phone calls fifteen minutes, or it's not, I could go escrowing, but. Just a matter of policy, whether I can be putting time in, so that some people get that, I remember, if you'd be, but Melissa really handles the management to that, that, that very, very well. And, um. So you know, under, under, I think it's worth taking a moment, my next section in the memo is called secret. And, uh, it's all the obvious, and, but I think it's worth taking a moment to see where this project is secretized. And, uh, because that's really gonna dictate in part what your next steps are. Uh, and, um, the idea of a submission and a board review and another submission, a board review. You make progress, but you don't necessarily get that much closer to a, a decision in some ways. And in any case, secret has to be part of all that, so, so just talking about that for a moment, um, the, um.
Tweaker also?
Well, Tweaker goes really, because the procedural things are, are, are really, are really, yeah, so, um. Uh, and, and it says, and we should, and I'm just saying, we should continue to seek input from us, the county department, health and, and public works and New York State D O T, they're all sort of involved. And obviously, you guys have been maintaining that contact and, and as a, as a rule, um, for the, for the file, we really like to see any correspondence that you have with them. So when you make a submission to any one of those agencies.
Yeah, it's good.
The letters and stuff, we'd like to see like what, what those conversations are about, like how you're progressing, is there more questions you're asking, more questions they're asking? Because you know, like D O T could, you know, um, have somebody like say, okay, right in and right out on twenty eight is okay. And maybe not have looked at some of the other factors that this local board knows that stretch, uh, would be asking, and that doesn't mean that what they say is, you know, like from, from God. You know, which can be something I can deal with, you know, and so you, we want to see what that data was.
Matt, if I just have one question for you, if I may, just a point of information, this is something that we wanted to bring up tonight, just as far as our application. So naturally, this process, I believe from some of your prior memorandum indicated that this is an unlisted action and it's an uncoordinated review. Uh, only question is, I, we, we pulled the foil documents for the, uh, Stewart's gas station when it was approved back in ninety six. And it was treated as a type two action under secret. We are only proposing a twenty four hundred square foot facility. And the non, and when it's a non-residential commercial facility under four thousand square feet, typically that would be exempt from the secret process. So I just want to confirm how it was classified as an unlisted action, and we don't have to, this doesn't have to be today, I know this is a sketch plan review and. We're really trying to get the issues out there and kind of get all this packaged back in a formal sort of, uh, way. And we would, for, for the record, we would be totally comfortable sort of recirculating if, if indeed this continues as an unlisted and not a type two action. We would say, go ahead and probably intentionally recirculate to these agencies, because we've changed it, the team's changed, and so has the plan, it's responsive to your comments. So I guess the question, because I can talk really fast, if I slow it down, is. Why was this classified as unlisted and not type two, uh, before, under the four thousand square foot destruction threshold?
Say that, the reason we did that is because we know that the issues that we're dealing with, we could deal with under the site plans, which is.
Of course, yep.
And so, um, and the board. The, uh, a format and. And, and, and the E A F had been submitted.
Yes.
And, and Bart Linsky, the prior council, is, I guess is no longer counsel on this.
No, I'm sorry, Cutty and Fetter is the applicants attorney.
So the, the prior attorney Bart Linsky, he, um, he, he was participating in, in that secret process, so the, so the board is continuing.
Fair enough, so maybe we would have a, just a separate.
We do know that's an issue.
Right, and I, and I think I highlighted, only because I looked at your points about, you know, positive declarations, of course, as an exempt action, there is no discussion of secret. These same issues, traffic, parking, public health, safety, all the concerns that the board would address in a site plan, a special permit. Application would still be fully present in the application, it just would change procedures, so we may, if we could have a separate conversation, you know, if the board sees fit or, or we can continue that. Our, our position would, separate from prior council would be that this would likely be can classify as a type two exempt action consistent with what, uh, Stewart's. It's almost, not to say they're the exact same application, but they're pretty similar.
I want to raise a question about that.
Please, yep.
That was what, nineteen ninety four?
Ninety six.
It's a long time ago.
Secret regs have changed, you're absolutely right, has not changed.
And, and the, the facts on the ground have changed and the traffic.
Yes.
City has changed.
No question.
So the fact that they were, that that was appropriate then, doesn't mean that this is necessarily appropriate.
Absolutely, and I, if I may, just the section that we're referring to, the four thousand square feet of non-commercial, that wasn't a change in the current update to secret regulations. They only added a few criteria, so I just.
Really more talking about the fact that this was almost thirty years ago.
Right.
And a lot of things are different.
Yes.
So we need to take account of the current situation.
Absolutely, and again, these issues, no matter whether we call this a secret process or not, will be handled in your site plan and special permit process. Special permits oftentimes sort of bake in these seeker considerations, because a site plan review doesn't necessarily get there. It's more about dumpsters and landscaping, kind of the, the jazzing up, whereas the special permit gets into the more looks and feels and communicate, so.
I defer to Matt on that.
Yeah, understood, so, and again, I don't mean to bog it down tonight, I just, it's one of those procedural things, we know we're in sketch plan, we are not rushing this at you, we are just laying out the issues.
I don't think any attempt to equate this to Stewart's is beneficial to you. I really. Because this is a different parcel with a very different physical configuration when it comes to the roadways. And it comes to the fact that the traffic patterns, all of us live here, we see what happens on Sunday afternoon. Sunday afternoon would be a boon for you. Because that's the way the traffic's headed, back to the city.
And there was no ashok and rail trail when Stewart's came.
Exactly.
Totally, and that's why we, we hire the best to do what they do and they do it, and they're usually on your side, so you, we're lucky to have Craig Manning, because they're usually on the municipal side of things. So having them here on the applicant side is always a nice change of pace, because now we're like, come on Stark, you know, you know, he's, he's here to help, you know, they see it from both sides of the river, starting to punch you so hard in their start. But generally speaking, we hear those comments, we're gonna work those into our application and, and reflect that, our designs are changing as we get these comments from you. We're early in this process, which is funny to say, given what it was submitted, but we're treating this almost as a new, you know, sort of leaf. Turning, whatever we are, but we're, we're, we're certainly mindful of that, and hopefully by getting these cars to come into this site. You really are bettering a condition that might be caused by the folks trying to get their, is it moose tracks, whatever the one that I always get from, from Stewart's, their ice cream, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, bear tracks. Bear tracks, moose tracks.
So you're saying that people that are southeast going might not do illegal.
That's, that's part of it, yes.
The, the Sunday comments, it's something that Matt actually picked up on, that is, that comes from that. Our traffic city does look at the Sunday data, um, in July, so that, that was one thing that we, we certainly took into account.
Special permit factors will always consider traffic, any of these impacts, noise, lighting, hours of operation, they're all there.
Just traffic, but as I said, the rail trail has also compounded this.
Yes, wage.
So, I mean.
No, a hundred percent.
The rail trail. Expanded more rapidly than anyone anticipated.
Yeah. Great resource.
Well, it is indeed, and it's. I love the one that's planned, though, is underestimating.
One of the things that's in conversation just at the level of the town people. Is that you can't get to Woodstock from the rail trail and vice versa without crossing twenty eight. And the question of how that becomes safe is going to be on the agenda in a number of places very soon.
It is.
I promise.
Yeah, we see it in Tyler Grange, we see it all throughout, you know, each, any county north of Westchester and Orange, you can see it, you know, that's just how it is.
So, so I want to, I want to just make a point that you were telling us pointing about the secret procedure, is that absolutely a point that has to be dealt with? And I think we would probably need to, uh, John Lyons, um, responding to the opposition, because. We're shifting from a secret structured review of these kinds of issues. To a S U P and site plan structured review of these same subjects is a slightly different animal. And some of the decision-making that the board has as its option can be different in one, in one path or another. But as a result of this meeting, we're going to be agreeing on certain next steps, like just, for example, on traffic. I'm recommending extremely strong, there we have to, traffic engine. And, uh, now. As well, and I have worked with a traffic engineer, he's, uh, would be, would be available, this kind of work. And, um, one of them actually lives in, uh, one of them actually lives in Woodstock, uh, where he works for, uh, his name is George Jackomar.
Hello, yeah.
And he works for, um, it's called Buck, Buckhurst Fish Jackomar. Because he's.
Since, since Melissa's the one who handles that really well, the planning board has to agree with Matt, but. Traffic engineer is what we're talking about right now, so monetary, so wise, talking about traffic, but traffic engineer. We're talking about John Lyons is the planning board attorney, um, because I've worked with John Lyons before. Rudolph was doing, Matt was doing these memos and he's, we're, we're extended pretty much on what we had money wise, so. So I'm going in thinking, maybe we should put ten grand in the escrow account, so we can just keep busy. If, if that seems reasonable.
With Lyons and the traffic engineers, that's sufficient.
And Larry's, yeah, Larry.
And Larry's, is that sufficient? That's a lot of reviews.
Well, if you prove it tonight, they're ten thousand's nothing, yeah, it's good.
Well. But that just. But that just might, again, that's the board's goal, but I mean administrative part, when we're talking about this and seeing all this.
Doesn't get you as far.
Well, the idea is, you know, the applicant wants to move the project along. You know, in the, up, in the past, we've really made escrow deposits that were sort of like on the next month's events. So like the escrow deposit that was made, the last escrow deposit was made, really covers me through this meeting. That's why I didn't review the traffic report. So the idea of a number that's going to allow you to concede.
We have a town supervisor who's very tight with the budget, so.
We are, you, you have, like you said, I can repeat it, but we are a team. You're not going to have any trouble. You know my colleague Alan Glad. We're, we're, we're not, you can find us. Too many phones.
Yes, you are reputable. I will go on the record saying.
So whatever the board sees fit will, will certainly work with the applicant.
So you know, we're, we're, as long as we're talking SEACR for real about substantive way. This, this idea of the convenience store size under certain size being the type two thing, that was obviously a convenience store of America, sort of hawkish. Push in terms of, you know, when the regs were being changed at some point in the past. It's very, very realistic. Because while it's true that dealing with traffic, dealing with other issues can be done in a special review, you can't be done in a site kind of view. This is really the same mechanism because in SEACR you have a real option. And if for some, and if for some reason this board was dead set against exits on twenty-eight. Now, you guys being dead set on, you know, exits on twenty-eight, on twenty-eight, that's fine. But you can't make SEACR determinations based upon your suppositions. They have to be established, you know, with, with, with that professionalism, sort of assessing the judgments and opinions and coming up with the response, responses to how they're, what may have or may have not properly dealt with those things, but not addressed or asked. So it really needs that interplay uh, between the professional level. But the SEACR situation is, is, is very aggressive because SEACR is really gives you that opportunity. Because if you were dead set, if you were scared the heck about being responsible for what might happen on twenty-eight if that were to happen. In SEACR you have an option. You can, you can really reject it, but after you've made a positive declaration and, and forced the applicant to take extraordinary steps to try to demonstrate why your concerns are not justified. Or how they can be mitigated, how they can really sort of make it be that you sort of have to let it happen. Because they can do something that makes it work alright. But if they can't, you can reject, you can, you can, you can reject the application based on that. So in SEACR you really have that authority. And so that, this will play out, but just so you understand that. It's, 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 it's trickier under the site plans, especially use primary review, but that's okay. We'll have John Lyons' problem. We'll come up with the, the kind of review that, you know, gets the planning board to deal with the issues that are important then.
Boards oftentimes grapple with the same conversation. It's like, wait, we just adopted a NEG deck. But now we have to go through the special permit factors and they're the same factors. Not, again, I don't, I don't mean to say they're exactly the same.
Seen a road light and watched somebody blow through the red light when I would have been out in that thing if I hadn't seen him coming.
Right.
The length of that basin road.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because that's one of the spots where a lane on twenty-eight could get backed up in theory. If enough car, if the cars fill that, that rim, then a car on twenty-eight could get backed up. Now you're describing the length of it and the typical length of the, of the.
Not the typical length, the maximum length of expected queue is one-third of the available length.
So if that's the case, and we have a traffic engineer validating that, that really in theory eliminates that concern. The twenty-eight, the right in and right out of twenty, that's another question because, you know, it's incredible, you know, I drive that every day. And you know, since the pandemic, I don't know if you noticed, we got a little bit of driving test.
Yeah.
One of the things that's nice about development on a site too, is that it does help activate the street drainage. People will drive faster from a vacant property because there's no activation, there's nothing to see. There, there is a lot of, hey, just blow by because there's nothing. You can see that on, on back roads all the time where they know it's not being enforced. When you do add activity and it is functioning, that oftentimes can help be, it's not a, I'm not saying it's a traffic mitigation per se, but it does.
But that could be, and that could be fact, that's something that could be factored into the model.
Right. And it is a signalized intersection. I know that clearly people will take their own liberties that the, the stop signs that have the white orders are optional, right? We know that's not true, but.
So let me just, so let me just, I just wanted to make that sort of SEACR.
They all have white orders.
Because it's, I think it's important for what you really know, what, what, what they're facing when you're making a decision.
Have to see what John says.
And what are traffic, and what are traffic consultants.
Yeah.
Because traffic consultant can say, you know, it's still a lot of nonsense. Or can say, no, they've really dealt with the issues properly. And, but there might be other things that it hasn't addressed properly and they could be consequential ones. And that has to be comments back to them for them to address or not address. So it's sort of, it is still that same give and take process. And that's what happened in a way. It's really just affects procedurally, sort of, sort of how we go. So you know, I'm just making, repeating some of the comments I made before about the rail trail. I mean, the people are all going to go into that intersection and.
Yeah, it's like a U-turn, yes.
Yes, you do. After, there's no other way to, to either way. So you all understand that. I mean, you're coming out of the rail trail. It's a no left turn. Big sign. So some people will still make left-hand turns there. And that's another factor. So the propensity of people to still make a left-hand turn there against oncoming traffic, that's something, is there a way of predicting that?
Today was a bicyclist going across all four.
Because that could be, that could be.
You mean that's a track of rail trail entrance?
Yeah, that's the issue. So, so.
Can't make a control.
Right, no, I understood. And so, so there's that uncertainty.
But two twelve is officially a state bike road. Ha ha.
And so, so everybody, so everybody coming out of the rail trail.
In the middle of twenty-eight though.
Everybody heading out of the rail trail with the accident, heading west on twenty-eight, um, has to make a right-hand turn. Has to turn away from where they're going and go into that basin road, get through the intersection where the gas station is and not have it back up, you know, in a way that really doesn't make a lot of sense for a community that's planning. Those, those are kind of questions that.
Sometimes, and I just on that point too, because we see this regularly with applications like this and, you know, other similar situated properties, whether it is a gas station, whether it is just a convenience store, what it might be, is oftentimes this also allows sort of, when a car is backed, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm wearing that hat at the moment. Chris Stark has said many a time this exact kind of statement, but folks turning left onto the Xena Basin crossover. If they see that that would be backed up, some may just come get a Gatorade or may fill off onto the additional. So it almost acts as a, a relief valve in, in limited instances. I'm making that anecdotally because that is, what, I do what I'm waiting to make, I'm like, oh, maybe I'll go to the bathroom.
Make it turn within the property and that's not so easy.
Right. So again, these are all just sort of considerations that take place when we're talking about if we're generating new traffic or new conditions. They also can be, oh, this is where I'm going to get my gas or this or, you know, they, so it, it almost adds additional um, queuing area, so to speak, in that area for those cars coming out for them if they're coming off the roadway. So, you know, that's a specific instance where you're leaving the rail trail and you're trying to get your water or Gatorade before you go home. You know, you never know if that's one of the main.
And the signal operates very well, even like in the existing condition and in the, the build condition, we're anticipating very good levels.
Is it adaptive? Is it an adaptive?
No, it's not adaptive. It's um, no, it's just actuated. It's actually, it's semi-actuated, uncoordinated. So for that mean, that means um, actuation, people, as they arrive at the intersection, they actuate the signal so they get the green. Semi-actuated means that only two of the approaches, which are usually the Meyer approaches, um, able to turn the signal on. So if you go to the intersection, you'll see like those cutouts, those saw cuts in the uh, roadway. That's the sensor that actuates the signal to turn on.
I know it's not a bad light as such things.
Yeah, otherwise the signal, twenty-eight just stays green unless somebody pulls up onto that, uh, onto that sensor.
Which of course encourages people like.
Well, I was in Albany recently and the lights are so long.
Well, that's like a lot of state signals, um, you know, the cycle lengths are usually like a hundred and twenty seconds. I think this one's kind of, I was going to say snappy, like quick.
No, it's quick. It's really dirty.
I think it's set to, I think it's, I remember it's eighty seconds or something like that is the cycle length. So it's, it's pretty short compared to most state signals. Some that are usually like one-ten, one-twenty.
So I was telling, I'm just switching gears from, because that's really nothing about, about traffic. Unless I put some words. But Tira, I was very happy that you mentioned especially U standards. Because that's one of the comments we've been asking the applicant to do, to submit an narrative, which is why they comply with the, or in that case with the barriers as well, or why they comply with these standards. So that's.
Spoiler alert, that's what our, that's exactly what our supplemental is going to do, but maybe we'll reframe, reframe that. So it's supplemental, but also sort of directs you, you know, Adam, to the responses more directly from your various memorandum.
So on the zoning compliance, there's still some setback questions we have that you just saw, that there are a couple of property lines and a couple of the tank uh, the tech, the distance from the, the setbacks for the buried tanks.
Yeah, I think they have.
So they did, I think they just weren't indicated on the plan.
Well, then I was going to say that, I think the tank's current there, it's like thirty-four feet or something from that. So it has, the tanks do have to move just slightly to meet the thirty-five feet.
So you have to take, you take, you saw this, so you would take, you'd be able to comply with.
Yes, there, there's, yeah.
So we're just asking for them to demonstrate that they comply with these setback requirements with the tanks and, and uh, some other things. We saw that question, so, you know, in terms of that, and have you raised that question particularly?
Yeah, so I mean, the, the, basically, I think from twenty-eight to basin road, you have, we have a twelve feet of height difference. And so, uh, and what we're constrained with is, at the pump itself, is being able to keep a ADA compliant pump at two percent. And so that's where, um, and then everywhere else, well, across parking, we're trying to do a maximum five. So that really kind of constrains the site a little bit to make the, the basin entrance at about seven percent, seven, seven to eight percent of an entrance.
So compliance is, and, but then there's that, there's a flatter section closing the road.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-five feet of the roadway has to flatten out more than.
But that, that, that's going to be very difficult.
Yes, so that's, so that's okay. That's a thing that has to be continued to do with that. And um, always the parking spots, well, on, on the, the prior parks, we'll do more of them. We're on a fairly slanted section themselves.
Well, these, um, these. We really don't, well, the, the, well, there's ADA compliant uh, spot, which would be two percent, but then the rest of them would go up to about five.
So five percent.
We don't really want to go past five percent.
Between, what's the distance between, I mean, vertical distance between the um, contour lines along.
Two, two foot, but as uh, Matt pointed out in the letter, for whatever reason, the major topo line of uh, who said?
Not much.
By seventy, I don't know why it got deleted. It was on the plan at some point, but then it got deleted off the plan.
I got a lot of things like that.
I, I know it was, I, I know it was there. I, I didn't personally draw it, but I know it was there when I reviewed the plans at one time, so.
Okay, so um, um, so I, I got definition of the patron area. That, that was something I was asking about. And uh, signs, we have some, we have some, some more to do on the signs. So we just have to demonstrate that, you know, they comply. And uh, they, they, they were complying from the set of plans that you, so we raised questions about, and demonstrated where they are with the signs. And uh, and then the stormwater management issues, uh, we, we, two questions, right? Just the runoff evaluation regarding retention, retention, potential for off-site flows as it relates to driveway functioning and safety. Uh, because that stuff can freeze in the future and, and, and it's contributory to the weather and ultimately to the reservoirs as well. And uh, and then the rain guard, there's two questions about the, the functionality of the rain guards as design. Because rain guards, you know, in a gas station, when people chuck out stuff, the rain guards could become a trash pit. Or some of that. Some questions, some questions like that, just aside.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not quite sure how you stop people from doing trash, but I mean, it's a, it's a, you know, maintenance issue, that's for sure.
You make sure there are enough trash cans.
Yeah, that would be.
Car window.
But where, but where it's a, where it's a matter of potentially affecting the functioning of a piece of the infrastructure on the site that the planning board is relying on. It has to be something structured, so there's some reliance, it's actually a matter of aesthetics, it's a matter of proper functioning of the, of the infrastructure.
Yeah, one of the, one of the system, one of the systems, you know, as far as like clocking the system is that you, uh, there are baffles over top of the outlet pipes leaving those bio retention areas. And those baffles are specifically there to stop floatables from continuing downline. And so that, that's one, and that would be installed on the catch basins to stop floatables and actually stop some grease as well, which I know you mentioned. You know, or you used to mention oil separator, I believe in your, so that the battle would also help.
Judith, was the stormwater question that you had in your mind that you were going to ask earlier, was that?
No, that's, that's part of it. I mean, it was really that it, that the driveway flows across and even if there's a little bit of crown to the road, there's a stream on the other side of the road.
Yeah, so you're, um, do you, that, there's an existing set of catch basins leading like from the rail trail uh, bridge there down along the side of the road. And that's where the water, I'm not sure exactly if the water is crossing um, from the swamp area up by the reservoir, down across, and then it runs into those existing catch basins. And that's what we're planning on trying to tie into. And then that all discharges across that little section of basin slash Xena uh, road there.
So did you do landscaping work or just use what was there previously? Because we have some comments.
Which we, we have, we have to work more on the landscaping, for sure. Whether it's a landscape architect or whether we update the plants more ourselves, that, that, we need, we need to work on the landscaping.
Well, I, obviously the board has a long way to go on this project, but in terms of, it's in terms of the location, I'm sort of a gateway. You know, and uh, and uh, we think, I, I think, I would recommend to the board that they encourage you to use a landscape architect.
I mean, the, yeah. Yeah.
And what's with the, what's with that temporary water line? When does that, what, what?
It runs all the way up base.
The city of Kingston's line, what is the story with that?
I actually do not know.
I saw, you can see it, yeah. You can see it there.
That was last year. Cooper's Lake, yeah, Cooper's Lake. And they had to lower the water down in Cooper's Lake to do that. And it was downtime. So they got a little concerned they didn't have enough water. So they tapped the reservoir back to the.
You mean the stuff along Xena Road?
Yeah.
All those black pipes?
Yeah.
That everybody's always saying what's that?
Well, it goes across.
So that's meant to be temporarily.
But I was gonna say, we're, we're.
That would make it hard to get into the site.
Well, they didn't bury any.
I was gonna say, that was.
Harder.
Nobody limitations the landscaping is, you know, is the DOT right of way too.
Inside distance, yeah.
We can't, we can't approach on the.
Yeah, I think Phil's, Phil won't have anything uh, within fifteen feet of the right way. They're going to want it to have to be less than three feet tall.
I think we're trying, and a part of that, it's a great point, Matt, about being the, you know, sort of the gate exit, right? With the, the gate, where Stewart's may be the gateway, where the, where the gate out, but we're also a bunch of gate.
The view of, the view of this station on westbound.
Turning down, absolutely. And I think, we, we appreciate that. And I think that needs to be worked in design. But we're, we're committed to making the site work and function. And I think that can be done in a lot of ways. And I think, I'm just speaking for how many times I've driven. I think I don't drive by it every day. But it's currently, it's in its current state. I think we can do a lot better than, than what's there right now.
So Judith, could you, could you show, could you show the full?
I was gonna take a stab in the dark on that.
Could you show the full corner on the middle of the right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Up into the left a little. So, so in, in that, and just put the cursor down, right, sort of underneath where it says twenty-eight, underneath twenty-eight. Square, probably that square.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in there, is there going to be room to do something in there that's going to be really robust in terms of, it has to be, we see them.
Yeah, and so, you know, just today, I was, uh, that's right where the septic was proposed to be. That we may, we, we have to go back to the health department because that, that we have a permit from twenty eighteen. But we have to go back to them and talk to the health department actually on that directly. And we may, we may. And since we moved, we basically moved everything forward from the back, from the rear of the lot specifically to meet um, the open space requirement, which I know you noted, and I didn't, I don't think you were here when I mentioned it, it's wrong on our, our site plan. It listed, listed as sixty, yeah, the green area. Um, this was listed at sixty-five percent, but that's not, that's not the case. It's forty-one point, it's forty-one point five percent um, is what the actual green air space of the lot is. Um, and so that, you know, and I know we got to work on that. Since we have more room back there, we may be able to pull the septic area back. Plus, we moved the well's location to get it away from uh, the previous application had it actually run it close to the fuel tanks themselves.
That's also one of the setbacks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, you're aware that there's a, a bus stop right there.
Yes.
Which might actually be a good thing for the business.
Yes.
More where Ulster County trains it on that.
So back on the landscaping, just, you know, there's some species listed that are in the, in the plan and, and uh.
That is a work of art.
So those things, right. So, so landscaping, and that's, I think, you know, if you can, if you can make this planning board believe that the traffic is, is workable, then we'll, we'll see what happens. But these other issues are issues that, that we'll be moving forward with. That's sort of what our memos are supposed to be accomplishing. So still, it doesn't affect other board deals, all the issues they have, but it's, it's just moving, moving forward in that way. And then on lighting, also, there's just um, whatever was shown on the lighting, it just sort of really showed it like spilling out. There's really much of a, there's no real containment um, in the design of it that we can sort of see.
Well, there, I mean, all, all, all the pole lights proposed are supposed to be fully showed it. Um, but I guess the question comes out, I, I believe the code says you're allowed to do, is it one-foot candle on the property line? But there's some discrepancy about whether you go pavement to pavement, but then like the next line down, though, it talks about not going over the pavement. So I guess I was looking at, I believe it's one-foot candle, we're allowed at the property line, which we do need to revise uh, the lighting to make that accountable.
So that would be something I think that you know, you knew, because you, you're a bit technical in the sense of this, uh, I did not do. Planner comments on these, that are sort of licensed, you know, licensed professionals.
You have some good traffic comments.
You have some good traffic comments.
Why not do that stuff? Well, um, and that's what I was lighting. And then um, and. I was really just reviewing with what we already, with what Melissa and the board already discussed about who should be brought onto this. I was really just reviewing with what we already with what Melissa and the board already discussed about who should be brought onto this team to help this board make an informed decision. And we've already done that. We've already discussed that. Does the board have to act on that like in terms of that proposal to escrow?
Mister Chairman. So we have to have a resolution to increase the.
You we don't need a resolution. We just need to make a motion that you're accepting the recommendations tonight for escrow. And and then the applicant agrees tonight based on nodding before. So.
What is is that?
Yes, that's completely sufficient.
Is the amount of escrow?
I I think ten grand is safe for me.
I don't.
You don't.
I think we're shy since we've all seen these prices just go skyrocket.
That's twelve five.
You know, I was fifteen.
Gotcha.
It's between you guys. As long as it's in the meeting, I'm good. I just your board is in control, not me. I can write, I can accept the money. I can deposit it to the town. I can submit the bills, but you need to acknowledge.
It's okay. He doesn't understand.
I would say if you're.
I'd like to have a resolution for twenty thousand.
Well, I don't know. You say this. I cannot necessarily, but. That never stops me. I would say that ten thousand is a real number in the sense that we definitely gotta see what initial.
You have no say.
No, 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 but let me finish because you have because I'm agreeing with you. But it wouldn't actually do a whole second review. So so a different number.
Then we do another. Yeah, exactly. A larger number is gonna get us through the entire process, which is what I wanna say.
Fifty?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. I like that.
I I'm I'm good with this. It just needs to be the board has the final say, not consultants, not the applicant, the board.
I know that.
I know you do, and I thank you for your.
I heard it right. Fifteen dollars.
No, ten.
With three zeros.
I I'd like to tell you, if you don't use it, you'll get it back, but I kind of have a feeling.
No, in fact, that's what we're doing. The right after they leave, we're returning.
Returning escrow. I'm very good at that.
We we do that. We actually track it. And we don't spend your money for anything.
And we don't go to project.
Our goal is to be your easiest application on your agenda as evidenced by tonight's time.
We give it time. It's about a year just because bills and everything, but yes.
Um but we do appreciate the comments. I don't know. I don't wanna cut you off, Matt. I don't know if you hear through your memo. Is there, but there are any specific comments?
Do the memo. And I only want to ask the board. Are there new case reps?
Yeah. Oh, new case reps? No, but we're gonna have to do another site. So. Have new case reps.
We want to schedule.
We walk well over here.
Should be waiting for the next submission.
There we go.
I just think it sounds like you guys are working on a lot. So I almost think to have.
It can't be done from a car window.
Then when they go is gonna be better than what we have right now, just for the board. Cause then I don't wanna, okay, another site visit, another site visit. Does that?
We're gonna submit to you a. Perfect, because we're gonna submit to you a a submission that includes the specifically the special permit criteria, lays it all out.
I heard renderings, which is.
Renderings around, yeah, they're in development. All these things are being worked into the submission. So that way, you know, whether we're a seeker or not.
Right.
It's still gonna have to comply with all the other requirements and it's all gonna be there. So it's gonna be the same application, one way or the other. It's just how it's characterized, whether you're looking at it in our book or in a, you know.
We're we're gonna seriously look at speed because our concern is health, safety and welfare.
You have that regardless of seeker. So.
So that's.
At least power.
Oh, we like having tea.
What's that?
We look forward to your traffic. We look very forward to your traffic report. I do travel that at least four times, sometimes six times a day go through there. I have seen accidents there.
Many times, yes.
Hopefully, again, this activates it and and again, get some of those folks that were were trying to hit the stewards and and can really be a betterment of that area. And hopefully, you know, as Matt pointed out, a gateway. A lot of these things can help better that corner because it's, you know.
But I think you have to take into consideration and realize that's a hill coming down.
Yes.
And there's a traffic light in the middle of that hill.
Look, if we need to do it, my word means at our meeting store.
When I think terms green.
Like the old judge.
And go for it. And.
You have your star man. And he goes for a ride with the woman and she says, I thought you knew how to drive. And he said, I understand. Green means go and yellow means go faster.
That's right. That's Florida. That's Florida law right there.
It certainly is.
So we're gonna set a time for a second sketch.
Yeah, once they do, once they send out anything, um they're gonna they're gonna get you the escrow money so then Matt can review their comments and they're gonna bring more stuff and then Matt will get that right away and Dennis and. And we'll probably talk to John a little bit.
Yep.
Um we've been doing Zooms lately.
Sure. Was you gonna send me a notice for the escrow?
I can do whatever you would like.
If you could, please.
Have any email work?
Yeah, email. Perfect.
Just to keep it absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a question. How's anybody gonna know that the entrance is on basin road?
Good question.
I mean, I don't see how anybody is gonna like get to the stop sign and see, oh, there's a gas station I can turn left off twenty eight, but you can't.
So I'm so you're you're saying coming northbound.
Like they're coming going back to the city.
Yep.
And they're like, oh, shoot, I'm out of gas.
Well, they can turn right in off a twenty. So it's right in. So well, you'll see, you can see the gas station coming through and and the convenience store coming from twenty, but you would be able to turn right in. The only way you can get into the site is either through basin, then through the basin's.
But how are you gonna know that?
But if you miss, even if you didn't get basin, you can continue on that twenty eight and take the right in. You see on the top right? That's the right end.
That's where we're here.
Past the gas station.
Go backwards.
No, no, so you would take that to the right side of the.
So the light's green, though.
You're coming down this way and you go in here.
Good question. Yeah. So there's two ways to get in coming south.
You can go right off twenty.
Yes.
You can, but only take a right turn in.
Oh, you turn.
Right there. Only get right in here.
Okay, but it's out there into the hand.
Yes, so you pull in, pull into a parking spot, get your area, you have the rail trail, or you come up, get your gas, and then you come out to head back. You can either pull out and then take the right turn and keep heading south.
Okay.
Okay, but I think what you're not understanding is that when that light turns green, people go. And if the first person decides they wanna make that turn into the gas station and they can't get in the other lane, it's becoming a.
It's a problem.
That is a that's a real issue.
Problem. It is fortunate that it's two.
And it happens in stewards, but all we understand. They can sew back up the stewards. People are on twenty eight trying to get in to that road. And it jams up twenty eight.
We're we we're just.
Like I said, we're not that we're in the infancy, but we're in the beginning of this canoe and.
What you're talking about.
Having the tapping into will help us.
Right. They'll be able to review our site distance evaluation that looks at that driveway before that right turn movement and how we looked at speeds at that curve on that hill. We look at over a hundred vehicles on that road.
And that's in this. That's.
That's in the.
My other suggestion to answer your question, we would just take Mark out there with one of those big signs and swirl.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm saying that ideally you want you want people to actually take the base.
That's right.
We'll get a. To not that.
Yeah.
Create problems on twenty eight. So I'm asking, how could you maybe alert people to, you know, gas error or something, you know, that could get them onto basin?
Maybe Simon.
Yeah, we're trying to limit signage.
The whole intersection where people are turning left off Zena and all that nightmare.
And the other side of that is not Woodstock, though, is it?
No.
Everybody basically no turning, which is where the people who can't turn left.
Tons of people come off Zena to turn left on twenty eight. And that's going right where you have people coming out. It's just.
Yes.
It just takes my breath away to even think about it. Anyways, that's where I've almost had accidents. People coming that way on basin as you're trying to take the left on moving on to twenty eight.
And one of the things that would be most uh most um important and complex is. Stewards does affect traffic to stewards. So how the two, which you play with one of them, you're part of.
Yeah.
And we will accept the condition of no campsites on the site.
You don't have room for a camp.
All they gotta say is welcome to Woodstock.
Well, thank you.
Side over here where you're saying maybe there would be a sign, that's not in Woodstock, is it?
Where?
Where my little hands.
Is where the sign is.
I don't think that's. That's in Hurley.
In fact, if they wanna give the whole lot to Hurley, that's fine.
Annexation is not part of our application.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough. Yeah, sure.
Okay, it was a trade off.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you very much.
So then I can put stock.
Start, we let me go.
Yes, I do.
Go off, thank you. Thank you.
Take them all. Parents gave you three first names, you know.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, we got some.
Thanks, Matt.
Good you put a good being before you.
Thank you, Matt.
Everybody have a good evening.
Processed procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, unfinished business. We have a motion to return escrow account funds.
Broasting really nasty on the table, but I'm making a little joke.
The Woodstock. The Woodstock Public Library just six hundred and eleven. Centerline Communications, nine hundred and thirty one. Centerline Communications, one hundred and fifty eight. T-Mobile Northeast, one thousand twenty nine.
Giving money back to.
Yeah, we give it back.
Most of it's in Crown Castle.
Crown Castle, nineteen hundred. You wanna give the money back this or no?
A second. Do you test?
I don't want money to be.
Thank you. We didn't approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of March thirtieth.
Perfect.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor.
All right.
Thank you.
We do. We do have a construction of housing and I just wanted to repeat what I said before. I think you're gonna find the fourteen page summary quite readable. And the two page highlights is that's the place to start. Read the two page highlights, then read the fourteen page summary. And if you have questions that you wanna ask of the document of the of the actual draft law, it's there for you to look at. And if it's, I think it's a Word document, so you can search on, isn't it a Word document or is it a P D F?
I think it's a P D F.
But you can search on a keyword within P D F.
Yeah.
Well, I'll listen to the rest.
I I think so. Um we we need to kind of do a formal review, but I think you guys can look at it a little bit. We have worked a lot. Judy, Deb Dewan, Kirk Ritchie. So we're more in the loop than what we are typically when we're asked to review things. Um but yeah, let's hold on.
Well, we had a, we did a lot of processing of comments that people made, including.
And we met, we met quite a few times and said our concerns.
So the things that people raised about draft one were absolutely taken into account on draft two. And we think this is, and you know, one of the points I raised this because I was looking at the slideshow that we're putting together. And it's very, it's very positive and very forward looking, but it doesn't say, and it will because we will say it. This makes it possible to have affordable housing and protect the environment without somebody going in to spend the money to build. It doesn't happen. It's not a guarantee. It is simply something that makes it possible, which the current law really doesn't.
So we'll talk about, we have a workshop in the end of June. I don't know if that's gonna be too late, but we'll figure that out and then I can tag you. That might be too late, right?
It's kind of late.
Okay, so.
I mean, the way that this is gonna work is the town board will get a formal full dress presentation next Tuesday.
Okay.
The Housing Committee will host a a public meeting at the at the. Community center on the thirtieth, which is not the public hearing. It's simply an information center. The town board has to schedule a public hearing, which is the formal part of this whole thing. And all of that has to happen before anything gets moved by the town.
So our next meeting is is May eighteenth. I will forward you guys all the documents again and maybe we can just revisit this.
And they're online. They're on the town.
We can revisit this at the next meeting and then just maybe get the memo out. I mean, just glance over it. We have done a lot of work on it. Um any revisions? As I think Judy or Peter said, I I caught two clerical procedural issues right away. It's pretty important.
But we need to, we need to think about what it's gonna be like to actually use this as a tool when we are dealing with special use permit. And.
Subdivisions. We're the ones who deal with subdivisions and there's a lot of subdivision.
Right.
Stuff going on.
Now, we recently had the fem fem acre subdivision and the sand acre subdivision happened with a lot of advice and counsel from Kirk Ritchie. Uh so that it was modeled on the kind of thing that we think ought to happen. So it's a good example of how you could make it happen on a property that theoretically could have forty eight, forty lots on it, although you couldn't really. But you could have a lot more than twelve. And they did a beautiful job and will be in a position to require that that be the kind of thing people do if we get large subdivisions. And even minor subdivisions could follow those rules if they wanted to. And things like requiring a house, a a building envelope, so we know exactly where the property is going to be even ten years from now.
And and a lot of us, you guys as a trained planning board, we do all this. Like when I was reading through it, like we automatically, I think, have done a lot of work in there, but now it's. Real, the conservation, the open area.
Sometimes they couldn't require it.
And sometimes I couldn't require it. Exactly.
Now, you know, fan makers is the biggest we've had in a long time, but there are other big pieces of land.
Again, I wanna say John Lyons is gonna take that to a webinar that he was doing and use it, but he ended up with somebody else and it didn't happen. So he was, he's commented a lot on how other things can be done with that.
And so did the Ulster County Planning Board because they dealt, they dealt with it last night. I was at the Mardi Gras planning board and they approved it. But they also made a nice long list of points that could be considered. And that and so we're in the town board's consideration of that report. There'll be some interesting points raised. Because that was a very, it was a very detailed report that they did on. What about the sixty two day? Is there some of the approvals for the planning board are limited to only sixty two days? That the primary has to be issued in sixty two days.
That's the law permit. It's, yeah, that's math and it's a plan.
Some something has to be done in sixty two days.
It it there's a little grace period right now. Covid's kind of changed a lot of things. It's a little bit more. And when more things are involved. Technically, there's another statute that says within it can be renewed, it can be re. There's other statutes in across that one that sixty two is a whole. Um yes, as John just said, yeah. You wanna enter my seat? Peter's getting answered.
So Melissa, you're gonna send the um the stuff to, oh, Dennis already has it?
Yes.
And getting John Lyons activated on it. Is that something?
Yes, he's already been forewarned.
Okay, good. So I, because I certainly, that's a subject I wanna talk.
Absolutely. And you would receive their rebuttal, their their comments. So if you need me to send all that again, I absolutely do.
Okay, thank you. And.
Just let me know.
And I will, and I'll, but I'd like to contact George, like I'd like to try to contact the engineer and get a written proposal and run that through you.
Absolutely.
And if it's not so.
I just needed to know the money was gonna be there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Including the ending.
All right, Peter.
Okay, everyone.
Motion to adjourn. Yes.